Hey.
Hey, that's what Hector looks like.
There he is. I like your background, though.
Thank you. Apologies, Jamie, how are you doing?
I'm good. It's fine. I'm doing other stuff in the background, so feel free to ignore me.
By the way, we're huge fans of LOC down here. Those are awesome. You do a fantastic job.
I hope that continues after this presentation.
So, oh, I'll ask something else offline, but I think I know, I think I went to college with one of the, one of your colleagues.
Who's that?
Nick Snead.
So he no longer works here. He hasn't worked here for a while, but I do know the name. Um, but yeah, I see his name in like the old files.
Okay.
So, sounds familiar, but I don't, I don't know him personally.
Oh, yeah. Oh, he's a great guy. He's a really great guy. I beat him up. Okay, well, I'll turn off mic and get ready to.
Oh, Hector, I'm sorry. I didn't know it was 5:15. I thought it was 5:00. I'm sorry to make you feel rushed.
Hi there, Jamie. Thanks so much for joining us tonight.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so one thing I will, before I forget, I know you asked me a question a while back about marijuana. And I was like, and I was gonna reach out to one of our lobbyists. I did reach out to him. He never responded to me. So I, I didn't answer, and I felt terrible because I was waiting for something, but.
No worries. You know, what I found is that a lot of jurisdictions are struggling with it, but no one has yet found a good solution.
Yeah, I think it's something that's going to be addressed either this session or next. Actually, I think it might be this session. So it, yeah, I know it's an issue, especially down south there.
Yeah.
In your county, um, but I don't know if anyone's been able to do anything about it yet.
Yeah, the only thing I've found, just since we have a few minutes to kill, um, is, would be to stop using municipal water for commercial ag.
Yeah, I don't think you can single out a specific industry.
No, I, yeah, that's why I've come to, you know, the preliminary conclusions is that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's tough. It's like the Wild West out there, especially with that topic matter.
It's wild. Um, I, I grew up in the region.
And so it's definitely changed a lot.
And it's changed so much coming back. Yeah, Nicole grew up here, Councilor Greider grew up here. Yeah. So the marijuana is a newer thing and same with the climate change.
Yeah, that's, the wildfire thing has been insane. I mean, I didn't, I didn't, I don't live in Southern Oregon, but I've even noticed how different it's been. I mean, the summers have changed drastically, you know, and the ability to be able to enjoy it. Even up here, you know, in the valley up north here, it's, it's been impact, not as much as for you guys down there, but it's definitely.
It's still the same. Are you in Salem?
Yeah, and so last year in particular, obviously, we had a lot of big fires out here. But we get, you know, a lot of times we even get smoke from Canada that funnels down the valley and, you know, it.
Stays.
Yeah, you can't enjoy the summer. Sad.
Totally. And then we will have folks trickling in here. This is typically a little earlier than usual for us to start, so I think folks are just probably signing off of work and getting food and all that jazz.
Okay, when is, when is our official start time?
It was officially 5:15.
Okay, whatever. Let me know when you want to get started and I can wait. I don't mind.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. You know, we do, as we, um, I discussed with Patty, I'm not sure if it made it with you, we do have a hard stop around at 6:45 is when our regular council session begins. If we can do a little earlier, even better, just to allow for some blood flow and a quick break in between.
Okay, so what I'll do, um, there are a couple of slides in my presentation that I, this doesn't normally take a whole hour and a half anyways. But I can go, not skip, but not really kind of just glance over some slides, because I'll send you the copy of the presentation that you can share with the council, and it has that information on it, so I don't need to read out something that y'all can read. That'll help with time, too, so.
Perfect. That sounds great. And I will say to Councilor Penamara, just so you know, Councilor Prestizo cannot attend tonight. It's main come up, and the mayor will be joining as soon as her schedule allows. We are just missing one counselor.
Um, yeah, Counselor Byers, who wasn't able to make the tour meeting. Yesterday, I think she had some family issues.
Okay.
So has anybody heard from Counselor Byers? So, if not.
I can send her a text.
Yeah, that'd be great. But I think we can probably get going. So, everybody else is here. I'll go ahead and call this study session of the Talent City Council to order. The date is February 2nd, 2022. The time is 5:16 PM. Roll call, please.
Councilor Clark?
Here.
Councilor Penimroff?
Here.
Counselor Greider?
Here, sorry.
And Counselor Byers is not present. Counselor Pari Miller?
Here.
And Mayor Ayers Flood is not present. Counselor Penimroff is acting as the presiding officer. So, Council, Councilor Penimroff, you have a quorum.
Super. Thank you, Hector. Item number two, meeting accessibility and the opportunity to translate the meeting into Spanish. Hector?
This is not pretty one to public. And Counselor, I'll watch the attendees, and if anyone raised their hand for interpretation.
Okay, and just so folks know, if people want to comment on non-agenda items, you can just raise your hand and, or on any agenda items, you can raise your hand. I don't see non-agenda items on the agenda today, but if anybody wants to comment on, on the study session later on, we'll have, they'll have that opportunity. So, moving along to item three, League of Oregon Cities' Presentation on Understanding Your Legal Obligations Under Oregon's Ethics Laws. Staff report.
Thank you, Counselor Penamara. I'm really excited to invite Jamie Hafner here today. Jamie is part of the legal council at League of Oregon Cities. She also runs their member inquiries program, which is a really great program to be able to ask colleagues across the state what they're doing in their towns. League of Oregon Cities is a really awesome resource, not only for staff, but for you all as council members as well. So, looking forward to having League of Oregon Cities here tonight. So, Jamie, I will pass it off to you.
Great. Thank you, Jordan. Thank you, Counselor. So as Jordan mentioned, my name is Jamie Hafner. I'm currently the interim general counsel here at the league. You guys might also be familiar with Patty Moberhill, who's currently our interim executive director, but we're both the attorneys for the league, officially and unofficially. So I'm very happy to be here this evening with you guys to be able to provide some information about ethics and your requirements as public officials. I'll be returning, I believe, next month to do another presentation on some other kind of core basic topics. With that, I'm gonna try to share my screen here. Let me get this going. And I apologize, I usually work with multiple monitors. Today I only have one, so it's a little different from my end.
Um, and Jamie, just so that you know, while you're presenting, you know, a lot of folks will be eating dinner throughout the presentation tonight, so they may have their cameras off. But I've asked them to go ahead and raise their hands on Zoom if they have questions that you know, questions are out there.
Yeah, absolutely. Do not feel bad about eating or anything like that, or turning your camera off. I totally understand and will not be offended. Um, so, again, welcome. The way I like to usually give trainings and presentations, I want it to be a dialogue as much as possible. This is your training for your city. So, if you have any questions about anything that I'm talking about, feel free to raise your hand on the Zoom function. It might be a little difficult for me to see your hand raised, so if your hand is raised and you're not getting my attention, just unmute and yell at me, and I will stop and be able to answer your question. Um, so with that, I'm just gonna get started, and I did tell Jordan I will be sending a copy of this presentation over to her either later this evening or tomorrow morning, so you will have copies of the materials for your review at some point in the future. So the goals for our session today are to learn about the ethics laws, learn who's in charge of oversight of the ethics laws, what the jurisdiction is, and the topics of gifts, prohibited use of office, conflicts of interest, nepotism, outside employment, and verified annual statements of economic interest. All of these are important, because while not specifically listed, the primary takeaway is to learn for you to stay out of trouble, okay? The goal here is, you don't have to have these memorized, but I want you to start thinking about red flags that might pop up, because if you're being more proactive, you will prevent, um, potential issues when it comes to ethics. So today's focus is gonna be on the Oregon Government Ethics Laws, which are found in the Oregon Revised Statutes under Chapter 244 and under the Oregon Administrative Rules, Chapter 199. The government ethics laws apply to all public officials in Oregon, so it's gonna really be important for us to look at who is considered a public official for these purposes. So, under the statutes, a public official is defined as any person serving the state of Oregon or any of its political subdivisions or any other public body as an elected official, appointed official, employee, or agent, irrespective of whether that person is compensated for their service. This means that all city elected officials, all appointed officials, and all employees, regardless of whether or not you're paid for your service, are subject to the government ethics laws. So this also includes volunteers, okay? And in short, to summarize it, basically, if you're a city, if you're affiliated with the city, okay, obviously, as a counselor, as a city staff member, or a volunteer, you're a public official, and these laws apply to you. Looks like there's a question in the chat. Oh, okay.
So the Oregon.
Counselor Byers.
The Oregon Government Ethics Commission is charged with overseeing the Oregon Government Ethics Laws. And Jordan, did you have a question?
No, I did. I'm sorry, I couldn't hit that button fast enough.
No worries.
Just to emphasize, so any of our committee members or commission members would also cap as public officials.
That is absolutely correct. Yes, so, um, if they are quote, "working" or representing the city, there's a very good chance by default that they're gonna be a public official for this purpose. I would say it's more unlikely that you would have an exception to that rule. So the reason why it's important to know, though, that the Oregon Government Ethics Commission are the one, kind of the oversight agency for government ethics, is because um, it's not your city necessarily, so I don't know if city staff, if you sometimes get complaints for ethics, potential ethics violations. I know LOC, we get a lot of people, like concerned citizens, saying, "this counselor did this, and you need to do something about it." Well, okay, that's great. I can't, we can't do anything about it. It's not under our jurisdiction. The commission, what they do, they review and investigate ethics complaints or concerns, and they'll either dismiss unwarranted complaints or resolve the matter by a settlement or through a contested case hearing. The commission can issue a range of sanctions from either a simple letter of recommend, reprimand, to civil penalties and forfeitures. In addition to their oversight duties, the commission will also issue advice in the form of formal and informal opinions. And I would personally consider this part the most beneficial resource provided by the commission and the staff, and the reason why is because if you have a question about the ethics laws, you can call a staff member of the commission and directly ask your question. Now, I would always recommend asking it as a hypothetical, but they can provide advice, actual legal advice on your specific question, and you can then rely upon that advice, so long as the facts still apply. And what that would do, that might not prohibit them from finding a violation, but you would be protected from any sort of civil penalties. So, um, don't be shy about calling. I know sometimes people get a little nervous about calling a regulatory agency. I've had to call them for clarifications on the ethics laws for both in my role personally and my role as a representative of the LOC board of directors. And they're super helpful. Yes, Counselor?
Yeah, I just add to that, I've called them too, and as well as you and, and your colleague there at LOC, and everybody is super nice and super helpful. And yes, always talking hypotheticals.
Yes, that's always, hypotheticals are always a good idea. The staff there are super friendly. Their goal's really to educate, so they can prevent you from getting in trouble. That's what they want to do. They don't want to have to file a sanction against you. Um, another helpful resources, as I mentioned, is kind of their list of prior findings and results. It's at the link that's on that, on the slide right now, and that's also helpful, because most likely, whatever question you have isn't the first time that the commission has approached it. So they will have various different, you know, opinions about a certain thing that happened to another official, and you'll be able to see how that might apply, or how you can just read that and say, "yep, okay, this conflict of interest was discussed. I have the same exact conflict. This is how they handled it. Here's the parameters of what I can and cannot do." So it's pretty helpful. So, what's not under the jurisdiction of the commission? So sometimes I'll get a member inquiry that says, "hey, this counselor is acting in a certain way. They're doing things that are suspicious." And while usually I agree, it's say, "okay, I don't agree with that behavior. It's morally maybe not something that I agree with." We're, we need to remember that for the purposes, the commission only cares about violations of the ethics statutes and laws. Yes, Counselor?
Um, just to confirm, you said you'll be sending this to Jordan, and then, Jordan, are you going to share this with us?
I will, along with that phone number for their questions hotline.
Great. This is very interesting to me, because I'm new, and I wanted that website as well, just for fun. I'd like to look at it. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so yeah, again, they only care about violations of the state ethics laws. So public officials don't have to be nice, okay? They don't have to be friendly. And there's also other areas of laws that aren't under the jurisdiction of the commission. So, for example, campaign finance. That seems like an ethics issue, but it's not something that they have jurisdiction over. Um, and then I will state also, and you'll kind of see this as a theme, the commission and the state ethics laws primarily focus on financial and economic impact of a public official's actions. And I also want to note, so this is only the state law. So the city might have some local ethics laws that apply to you that would not be underneath the jurisdiction of the commission, but maybe would be something that you still need to be aware of. So I did a really quick overview of some of your local rules. And so, for example, it looks like underneath your council rules of procedure under Section 9, it talks about ethics. A lot of them mirror what the state statutes talk about, but you also have one, for example, that says counselors are discouraged from expressing their, their personal opinion that's contrary to an opinion of the council. So that's something that your local rules is telling you you can or cannot do, but it's not something that is under the jurisdiction of the government ethics commission. It's also not something that I'm gonna be talking about today. So the first area of law, we're gonna talk about are gifts, and these are gonna talk about the things and items you can and cannot receive as a public official. So first off, again, definitions, it helps keep lawyers employed. What is a gift? So for the purposes of the ethics law, a gift is something of economic value given to a public official, a candidate, or relative, or member of the household of a public official or candidate, without valuable consideration or for less consideration provided to those who are not public officials or candidates. So, long story short, if you received it and it wasn't offered on the same terms and conditions as a member of a pub, of the public, it's probably a gift. So it's important to note, this, this part really pulls in other people in addition to yourself. So this talks about your relatives and household members. So again, definitions matter. So who is a relative? So for the purposes of ethics, this is gonna be the obvious ones, right? Your spouse, your children, or your children-in-law, parents, stepparents, siblings, step-siblings, the same members of the officials-in-law, so your spouse's child, your spouse's parent, your spouse's sibling. Anyone for whom you have a legal support obligation for, so you might have, you might be a guardian to a child who's not your actual, like, blood child, but you legally have to support them. They would be considered a relative. Anyone who receives the benefit of your public employment, if you are, let's say, a staff member or an employee. And then anyone from whom the candidate receives the benefit of your, your employment. So one thing to note, that doesn't include people such as, like, nieces or nephews, or aunts and uncles. The law used to include them, and for whatever reason, about six or seven years ago, the Ethics Commission, or actually the legislature changed it to exclude those people. So it's not every relative that you have, but it's usually the most common ones. So if a public official relative or household member is offered a gift, what restrictions apply? So gifts are limited to a value of $50 over the period of a calendar year from any single source reasonably known to have a legislative or administrative interest. Okay, so if you're a public official, generally speaking, you can receive gifts up to the amount of $50 over a calendar year. So this either means one item that's $51 or more a year, or multiple smaller items that add up to a value of over $50 throughout the calendar year. Okay, so January 1st to December 31st. That's where you have to look at, have I received gifts from this one person up to $50? As, if they have a legislative or administrative interest. So again, definition, what is a legislative or administrative interest? So, this is usually, so for an elected official, this is where the person has an economic interest in any matter subject to your decision or vote in your official capacity, or any matter that would be subject to the decision or vote if the candidate was elected. So for elected officials, this is pretty simple to figure out, okay? So, basically, if you're voting on an issue or discussing or deciding an issue, you, that is a legislative interest or administrative interest. It's a little trickier sometimes to determine when an employee is making a decision. So for the city staff out there, a couple examples of where you would be considered making a decision that has a legislative or administrative interest. So, for example, an employee makes a decision when issuing or denying a permit. An enforcement employee makes a decision on whether or not to cite, warn, or arrest somebody. So for your law enforcement folks. An employee who approves contracts makes a decision on that contract. An employee who commits their city funds for goods or services makes a decision. You're gonna want to ask yourself, are you being asked to make an economic decision that would affect or impact the person giving you the gift? And then you're gonna want to ask yourself, are you being asked to make a legislative decision that would affect the person giving you a gift? And if you answer yes to either one of those, there's very likely a legislative or administrative interest involved. And generally speaking, as a rule of thumb, all city residents have a legislative interest in the decisions of their elected leaders. Okay, so for city councilors out there, um, people who live in your city are always going to have a legislative interest in your decisions, so that can be pretty limiting. So it's really important then to know what things are not included, are not considered gifts. So there's gonna be about 16 different items that I'm gonna list. I'm not gonna go through every single one of them, because you'll, you're gonna have a copy of this list when I provide you with the presentation, and I know we have kind of some time restrictions here. But I'll give you kind of a few examples. So, items received from your relatives or household members. Okay, so even though your spouse is super disgruntled that you're running again for city council, and that you were elected again for city council, guess what? You can still tell them, "it's Christmas time. I want my gift." Okay, "it's my birthday. I want my gift." So there's no $50 limit on any of these items, okay? So you can still get all the nice things from your spouse. Um, certain things like the admission or cost of food provided to a public official when you're officially representing your city. So let's say you go to a conference on city business, and there's food involved and whatnot. That's not considered a gift, okay? Because you're officially doing your job. Um, to the next slide. So there's more. So like incidental entertainment provided when you are officially doing your job. Informational program material. So, I'm providing you with informational material right now. People could say it has a high value. Some people might disagree, but this is not a gift. So I'm not providing you with the gift right now, as nice it might seem, because it's information material that you're receiving as part of your official duties. Um, some other interesting things, so an unsolicited token or award um, for, like, a plaque or a trophy, as long as the expected item is valued at less than $25. So let's say Jordan stays with the city for the next 25 years, she retires, and the city council wants to get her a nice plaque. Um, that plaque itself might have cost more than $50 to make, but unless, if Jordan's like me, once something has my name on it, the value decreases greatly, right? I'm not Elvis. I'm not a public celebrity. No one's gonna want to buy that plaque for more than $50, $25, okay? So you're really looking at the reasonable resale value of an item. Another interesting one I want to make note of is any contributions to your legal expense trust fund established for your benefit. So this one's really interesting, because someone decided in the legislature that, okay, we're gonna put this limit on how much financial resources and gifts public officials can receive, but if you are subject to an ethics violation and you want to create a legal expense trust fund so you can represent yourself with an attorney, we do not care how much money you solicit in that fund. So I always think that's kind of interesting. So, if you find yourself in hot water, feel free to try to get as much money as you can to support yourself, because there is no limit on that. Any questions on those items that are not gifts? Yes, Counselor?
Yeah, um, so I guess if I had a GoFundMe for my legal expenses, that would be okay. But just generally speaking, if I have a GoFundMe because, um, I have to get a new tooth or something like that, if somebody who lives in talent contributes more than $50, am I in violation?
Yes, so that's something that I'm actually gonna talk about as an example, because presumably, that person is gonna ha, always have an administrative interest and legislative interest in your decisions. So could you have a GoFundMe page to where somebody from Ashland can donate? So could you have a GoFundMe page to where somebody from Ashland can donate? If probably, they probably don't have that legislative interest in your decisions, and that's probably okay. But you would have to be careful for anybody such as talent residents from contributing. Great question. So what do you want to find yourself, find yourself asking if you do face, if you're faced with a gift? So if you're being offered a gift, there's a series of questions that you want to ask yourself to determine whether or not you can accept it. And whether or not the fifty-dollar limit applies. So the first is, is it a gift within the definition of ethics laws? Because if it's not under the definition, then there's no restriction. Do any of the exceptions apply? Okay, so the exceptions that I just mentioned, do any of those situations apply? Does the gifter have a legislative or administrative interest? Because if they don't, it's not considered a gift. Is the value over fifty dollars? Or have you received gifts over the course of the calendar year from the same gifter that amounts to fifty dollars? And then, so if none of the above apply, you're probably in the clear. And then in addition to that question, I also think it's worth asking yourself whether you want to personally track these gifts. And worry about keeping track of all these amounts. So maybe you have somebody buying you a five-dollar cup of coffee. But do you really want to see, okay, I can have coffee with you ten times, but not eleven, or you know, like, oh. I guess I didn't do the math right, yeah. Or I can have it with you for nine times, but not ten. Do you want to really keep track of that? That might be a pain that you don't want to have to worry about. Jordan? Yeah, I have a question for a gift. Like, for example, say I get, you know. Lunch once a month with my city manager mentor, and we just take turns paying for the bill. Would that be considered a gift, or is that like a quid pro quo situation that wouldn't count as a gift? So that most likely actually would be considered a gift. So I'll give you a good example. So Patty, Patty's my manager. She's still my manager even now. And we're actually friends outside of, outside of work. And we just, she doesn't want to keep track of gifts, so she's, we just have a no gift policy. So she can actually, she can purchase me gifts, and she does all the time. So around Christmas time, she'll get me like a nice bottle of wine or whatever, my birthday. Or she'll take me out to lunch, and that's totally fine, because I have, or she has no administrative or legislative interest in my decisions. But the reverse isn't true. I absolutely have an administrative interest in her decisions because she determines my salary. So technically, I could give her a gift up to fifty dollars. That would be fine. But you're right with the lunches, I never buy her lunch. Because that adds up very quickly, and she would just prefer not to have to keep track of it. So yeah, it can be tricky. Also, I will mention on that comment. And I should have mentioned this when I first got started. Whenever I do ethics training, I start getting these like terrified faces on the attendees. Where they think, oh my gosh, I am going to jail. And, and what I want to say is that, okay. You know, let's, what happened in the past happened in the past. You're here, that's step one, you're here to learn. Just do better in the future, right? Like, the whole reason why we're giving this training is because it's not obvious, and so don't feel bad. Just move on, okay? So we're going to run through some hypotheticals just to make this all clear. Um, so a mayor's personal residence recently suffered damage due to flooding. Members of the public have set up a donation drive, say a GoFundMe for the mayor. May the mayor accept donations. Okay, so we're going to walk through this. This is just on point with the counselor's question. So step one, you're going to want to look at whether the recipient has a financial interest distinct from that of the general public. So in this situation, we know the mayor is not receiving donations on the same terms and conditions of the general public. This is specific to the mayor themselves. Do any of the exceptions apply? So for this purpose, no, there are none. Okay, the donations. Do fall underneath the definition of a gift. So now we need to know, okay, does the fifty-dollar limit apply? So step three, we need to know what the, the source of the donations are. And whether or not the source has an administrative or legislative interest. So in this case, we don't know whether the donors are limited to just city residents, or if they include other individuals. And because of this, it's important that the donations are not anonymous. And that the fair market value of each individual donation is known, so the mayor can assess whether she is able to accept the gift. With or without limit. So if the donor has no administrative or legislative interest. Then there's no limit, but if they do, there is. So the mayor in this case is going to want to track, okay, who here is from the city? Who here has other administrative or legislative interest with my decisions as a mayor? For those that do, I need to make sure I only, I cap it at fifty dollars. Anybody else is totally fine. So, does that help clarify your question, counselor? Okay, awesome. So let's walk through another hypothetical. So you're at a nationwide conference exclusively for city officials, and the city official buys a raffle ticket. And wins an all-inclusive paid trip to Hawaii. So we're going to walk through the steps again. So step one, is it a gift? Okay, is the vacation offered to other persons who are not public officials on the same terms and conditions? So in this case, no, because the conference is exclusive to city officials. Is there an exception to the gift definition that applies here? No, there's not. Does the source have a legislative or administrative interest in the public officials' votes or decision? So it depends. It depends on the source of the gift. Was it a vendor trying to sell recreational playground equipment? In that case, potentially. Or was it a nonprofit organization that has no ties to the city officials' decisions? Okay, those are questions you have to ask yourself, because it really depends. So then, does the trip have an aggregate value of fifty dollars in the calendar year? So yes, I think we can safely assume that an all-inclusive paid trip to Hawaii exceeds fifty dollars. So really, for this example, you're really going to focus on who the gifter is, and whether or not they have an interest in your decisions. A third hypothetical really to hone this in. You're a city staff member, it's your manager's birthday. Okay, the two of you have known each other for years and are close friends, and this is right on point with Jordan's question. You decide to purchase a nice birthday present for your manager. Can your manager accept your gift? So the first step is the item being offered to those who are not public officials. No, this is specific to your manager. Does a gift exception apply? Not in this case, no. Does the source have an administrative or legislative interest? So yes, as I mentioned earlier, employees always have an administrative interest. In those who supervise them. And then is the value in excess of fifty dollars? So this depends on the specific gift. So you're going to ask yourself if it's over fifty dollars, if it's not. Have there been other gifts or other types of things that have been given from the same person that then throughout the calendar year exceed fifty dollars? Before, yeah, go ahead, counselor.
Yeah, so does that mean that. Jordan, let's say for the purposes of this question, Jordan lives in Ashland, she can't give me a really nice bottle of wine. Is that what that means?
Yes, because while she's not a talent resident. She has an administrative interest in the decisions of the counselor, of the council, because you guys oversee her job. Maybe make sure it's like a semi-nice bottle of wine, like forty-nine dollars, or I don't know. Fifty's good. You can still go to fifty, just not fifty dollars and one cent. You're not off the hook, Jordan. Any other questions on gifts before I move on to the next area? So now that we know the.
Sorry, I wasn't quick enough. Did you already say about campaign donations? Those are, those are.
Campaign finance is a separate area of law, so I'm not going to be addressing those today.
Right, but that doesn't count as a gift, I guess.
Well, I would say it might. So I'll go back. So. It does cover candidates, the laws, so. If, let's say you have somebody say you're a candidate, or you're running for reelection, and someone says, hey, here's this donation for whatever amount over fifty dollars. Really hope you support our request for this land use decision in the future. That potentially could fall under the gifts. I would be careful, because. That person would have an legislative interest in your decisions for approving, you know, various land use decisions or whatnot, or whatever. And because the, the gifts, the ethics laws apply to candidates. I would say you'd have to watch out for that. So it could, it doesn't specifically address campaign finance, but there could be by campaign donations that might. Fall under that.
Wouldn't that, and wouldn't that make PACs illegal?
Not necessarily, because those come from a different organization. So I think if you find yourself. With a question where you receive a donation or some other, you know, campaign related thing, I would, that'd be a good question to ask the commission. Because it could be very, be very specific on who you're receiving it from. And what type of campaign finance laws might or might not apply. So, good question.
Thanks.
You're welcome. So the next area that the ethics laws. Address are prohibitive use, prohibited use of office. We'll talk about that. So underneath the prohibited use of office provisions, a public official cannot use their position for financial gain or avoidance. The promise of future employment, using confidential information for personal gain. Or for representing a client in front of the public body for a fee. And we're going to go through each of these in more detail. So the prohibited use of office provisions are also known as the but-for provisions. Because as a public official, you're going to want to ask yourself, would I have been provided with or offered the same opportunity if I wasn't a public official? So but for my position as a public official. Would I be offered the same thing? So kind of similar to the gifts. The first area. Is financial gain or avoidance. So public officials are prohibited from using or attempting to use. Their position to reap a financial benefit, or avoid a financial detriment for themselves, a relative or household member. So an example of financial avoidance is saying a discount or a free pass to attend something. That the official would otherwise have to pay for. So if the financial gain or avoidance would not otherwise be available, but for the public officials' holding of their office or position. The gain or avoidance is a violation of the ethics laws. And it's really important to know, it doesn't matter how minimal the financial gain or avoidance is. So whether it's a dollar or a thousand dollars, any amount is prohibited. There is one important relationship to gifts here. If a public official or relative accepts a lawful gift. Or a lawful financial benefit that qualifies as an exception to the definition of a gift. The state law does not prohibit the acceptance of that item as a but-for prohibition. So another exception. Public officials are allowed to receive without violating the financial gain prohibitions. So things such as your official compensation package. So an official compensation package means obvious things like your salary and wages, and other benefits like. Hers or health benefits that are provided to the public official. This also includes things like, I don't, I don't know if this applies to talent, but if there's any sort of stipends for the city council or any sort of reimbursements like that. Those are completely acceptable as long as they are part of some sort of official policy or charter provision or whatnot. Honorarium with a maximum value of fifty dollars, or something that's related to your personal life, and I'll talk about this a little more in a little bit. An unsolicited award for professional achievement, and then again, contributions to your legal expense trust fund. Honorarium, it can be a little confusing sometimes on what that is. So under the ethics laws, honorarium is defined as payment or something of economic value given in exchange for services. Upon which custom or propriety prevents the setting of a price. So an example of this would include, say, services such as giving speeches or services rendered in connection of an event. So to qualify, you would need to be able to answer the following things in the affirmative. So the honorarium was not, was not prearranged or agreed upon before you provided the service. You provided the service before the honorarium was offered, and the honorarium was delivered in return for or following your service. So what, what are, what's a good example? You know, you say you're, you know, you're a representative of your city and you really have an expertise in some, some subject matter. So Jordan's invited to speak at the OCCMA conference because she really has like this expertise in this one area of law, let's say land use. As a thank you for that, you know, the OCCMA provides her with like this nice. Bottle of wine, let's say. She didn't give the speech because she knew she was getting the bottle of wine. The bottle of wine isn't her quote payment for giving the speech. It's really more of like a thank you. You see that a lot when people give speeches. That likely qualifies as honorarium and is acceptable for her to receive. And I'll also note, you can accept honorarium to any extent. For a service you provided in your private profession or area of expertise. So a lot of times, elected officials have their own personal private employment. Their own, you know, nine-to-five job. Let's say you're an accountant in your personal life. Anything related to that that you've received because of you're an accountant is completely acceptable. So the fact that you're an elected official or a public official does not prohibit you from receiving items that you would ordinarily receive, ordinarily receive in your private life. So let's go through a hypothetical. So a public works employee stores her parents' motorhome in an otherwise empty city storage facility typically used. For storing the city's heavy equipment. So may the employee do this. What do you guys think? Yes or no? Seeing some shaking heads, yep, no. So the employee could not do this. Because if you have violation of the ethics laws, because but for the employee's position as a city employee. Her parents are avoiding the expense of paying for another storage spot for their motorhome. Because remember, the financial benefit can be for the official's relative. Okay, so this is assuming that the city doesn't rent out its empty storage space for the general public. Another example, you have a volunteer firefighter who is preparing the exterior of their house for painting. The department has a power washer available to loan out to the general public. May the firefighter borrow the, the power washer. So in this case, it is permissible, and it's not because the volunteers, the fire, the firefighter is a volunteer. Because remember, the ethics laws apply regardless if you get paid or not. The reason why it's permissible is because. The department has a policy where it loans out its equipment to the general public. Okay, so the firefighter doesn't lose his ability to. Receive a benefit that the general public receives, because it's open to everybody. It's not just because he's a volunteer firefighter. Finally, a counselor has a private business and uses the city's computer to conduct activities of that private business. So can the council do this? The answer is no, they can't, because they are avoiding the cost of owning a personal computer. Or owning a personal computer program. They're using their position with the city to avoid that financial cost. The next area is the promise of future employment. So I feel like this one's pretty clear to most people in that you can't. Solicit or receive any pledge or promise of future employment based on any understanding. That your vote, your official action, or your judgment would be influenced by that pledge of future employment, okay? Person's going to say, hey, I know you're having a hard time finding a job in your personal life. Hey, you vote this way, I will make sure you have a job at the end of the year, okay? Obvious ethical and moral issues there. You cannot use or attempt to use your personal gain through the use of confidential information gained in the course. Or by reason of holding your position or the activities of the public official. So this prohibition applies even after you cease to be a public official. So even after you leave office or after you take another job and no longer are employed by the city. You can't use confidential information that you gained by way of your position for your own future private use. So again, this one's pretty common. You know, don't, it's confidential, only use it for the reasons that you should be using it for. Don't try to get any sort of gain out of it. The final but-for provision impacts public officials who own or associated with specific types of businesses. The person may not attempt to represent a client for a fee before the governing body of the public body of which the person is a member of. This doesn't apply to the person's employer, business partner, other associate. Generally, you run into issues for someone in the legal field, engineers and architects, and I have an example of where this might apply. So a city counselor. Who would like to engage in a private business endeavor wherein the counselor would help landowners and developers. Plan their developments by assembling teams with experts needed for the project, such as lawyers, architects, engineers, surveyors, et cetera. They would also help prepare the application required to be submitted to the appropriate land use body. And they would also represent the owner where authorized and necessary. The counselor proposes to represent clients before the planning commission. However, if any decision is to be made by the. However, if any decision is to be made by the city council, either quasi judicial or legislative in nature. Uh, where the council counselor may appear to have a personal interest, the counselor will step down and leave council chambers. So can the counselor represent a firm before the planning commission? So, let's, let's think about this. In the stated facts, it indicates that the counselor would intend to represent clients before the city planning commission. Since the counselor is not a member of the planning commission, such representation would not be prohibited by the ethics laws. However, the counselor would be prohibited from representing the client before the city council. Because the counselor is actually a member of that governing body. Now, if the counselor instead represented the client for free instead of as a business endeavor and by charge. Then that would be permissible, because the prohibition is very specific to represent, representation for a fee. So, it is important to note though, that even if the council represents the client for free. The counselor is gonna have to follow the conflict of interest provisions, which I'm gonna talk about next. Yes, Jordan?
Question is, is being an ex officio on a commissioner committee count as being a member of that commissioner committee?
Um, it would depend on what role they would play. So, cause that varies depending on the commissioner committee, um, sometimes they, um, they don't necessarily have voting rights. But they might have different types of, you know, um, discussion quote rights where they can influence the public body. So again, with that situation, that would be a great question to ask the commission. Um, because it would depend potentially on what type of commission it is and what exact role an ex officio member plays. Cause that can vary too.
Okay, and I forgot to mention too, for the folks in the audience today, we do have some committee members and staff. If you guys have questions, I'll keep an eye on two, just raise your hand and we can um, have those questions asked as well, as counselor stated at the beginning.
So that's all I have for the but for provisions, I'm gonna talk about the conflict of interest provisions. Any other questions about the, the ones I just talked about before I move on? Okay, if you, they come up, just let me know. So conflicts of interest, um, is probably the most common area of ethics laws where public officials find themselves facing questions, okay? So the conflict of interest provisions come into play when the official's participation in an official action. Would or could result in a financial benefit to the public official. Um, a relative or a business in which, in which either are associated. A potential conflict of interest occurs when the action taken could potentially have a financial impact on that official relative or business. An actual conflict of interest occurs when the action taken by the public official would have a financial impact on the official. Relative or business, and so the would or could um, and potential or actual conflict are important to identify. Because the specific steps you're required to take. Um, depends on whether or not it's considered a potential conflict of interest. Or whether or not it actually is an actual conflict of interest, and again, I'm gonna flush this out a little more, so it makes a little bit more sense. Um, so if a potential conflict of interest occurs, so that this is if a decision could potentially have an impact. Then all the public official has to do is disclose that conflict, okay, all they have to do is say. For the record, here is my potential conflict, blah, 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 okay? If an actual conflict of interest occurs, so this is where the actual decision of the official will have a financial impact. On either themselves, a relative or a business in which either yourself or your relative is associated. Then you have to disclose in the official record, but then you also have to recuse yourself. So that means you, you have to disclose it, and then you cannot decide upon the matter. And while not required, um, best practice and what LOC recommends that in addition to recusing. So just being quiet and not discussing or making a decision on the matter. Um, we recommend that the public official actually step down from their seat, so if you're a city counselor, step down from the council bench. And then um, actually leave the room. And the reason why we recommend that, even though it's not legally required, is that the public perception um, piece of it. So, um, a lot of times, let's say you have a controversial matter, so there's a lot of people from the public. There's maybe a potential member of the media in the room. And you did your thing, you said, yep, I have this conflict, I will be recusing myself, you do not discuss the matter, you do not participate in any votes. But there's a picture taken, okay, and so, and that's published in the local newspaper, you know, big issue happening city council. Uh, counselor Jones, um, like look, it looks like they're participating, right? They're sitting there with all the other counselors, so that just really avoids that issue. Um, and really makes it so no one can say you're participating, even though you were silent. Uh, the way to actually do this in practice is when you know there's gonna be a topic where a counselor or somebody else has a conflict of interest. You can put that item at the very end of the agenda. That way, um, the official who's involved in that conflict can say, okay, here, I have a conflict. I'm gonna recuse myself, I am now leaving the meeting, so they know, they don't have to stay because there's no other discussion items. That's best practice. Um, so just to disclose a potential or actual conflict of interest. If the public official is an elected official, okay, so if you're a counselor. Um, or appointed member of a board of commission. You must publicly announce the nature of the conflict and the notice must be recorded in the official records of the public body. So it has to be recorded in the minutes of that meeting. Um, and it has to be made at each meeting and on each occasion, the issue is discussed or debated, no matter how obvious it is. So you have a conflict about something. Um, the council's discussing it over multiple meetings, even though everybody in the room knows you have a conflict, you mentioned it in the past. It's not a surprise, it's not a secret, you still have to take the time to say every time it's brought up or discussed. I'm making my announcement, I have this conflict of interest or this potential conflict of interest, please record it in the minutes, okay? So if you're a staff member, so if you're employed by the city. The conflict must be disclosed in writing to the appointing or employing authority. So in Jordan's case, you would have to um, disclose the um, potential conflict or actual conflict to the city council. Um, any other staff, most likely it's gonna have to be um, to the, to, to Jordan or their direct manager. Um, and then the um, employing or appointing authority must then designate an alternate. Of alternate person to dispose of the matter or direct the official. Uh, specifically how to dispose of the matter. So essentially what that's doing, that's removing all discretion from the conflicted employees' decision making. Okay, so either you wanna say, okay, I understand you have this conflict, I'm gonna direct this other person to take care of it. Okay, that disposes of it, or sometimes especially in smaller cities, there's nobody else to take care of the matter, you only have one or two employees. In that case, you're gonna wanna say, okay, I understand you have this conflict, I am directing you on the specific steps to take. So you no longer have any sort of decision making capability there. So there are three exceptions, oops. Um, to what, to the conflicts of interest. So the first, there's no conflict of interest if the conflict arises from a membership or interest held in a particular business, industry, occupation. Or other class that was a prerequisite for holding your public position. So a really simple example of this is that most city charters, including city of cha- talents, requires that all counselors be residents of the city. Right, you can't have your position unless you are an actual resident of the city of town. So, but you're still allowed to make decisions that would have impacts on the residents as a whole, right, you do that every day. Every time the city council makes a decision, most likely it impacts residents of talent, right, that's your job. So that is not considered a conflict of interest, you're obviously allowed to do your job. The second, um, it's not considered a conflict of interest. If the financial impact of the official action would impact the public official, their relative or business in which um, they're associated. To the same degree as other members of an identifiable group of class. So, a note on this, there's a caveat, the reason why I have an asterisk there, is only the ethics commission can designate a class. Okay, a public official should discuss a class exemption with their legal counsel and or the commission prior to acting upon it. So you might think you're part of a class because you know that there are lots of people in your community who are designated in the same. The same area that this topic's being discussed. But until you reach out to the commission and ask for them to confirm and designate that specific class. It doesn't matter. Okay, so you, you're either gonna work with your city attorney to have them ask the commission, or you're gonna wanna ask the commission yourself and have them provide an opinion on whether or not. Whatever the group is you're thinking of is an actual class, and I have a hypothetical on this, that's gonna explain um, a situation where this occurred. Um, specifically in the past. Um, and then the third area, there's no conflict of interest if the conflict arises from a membership in or membership on a board of a nonprofit. Five oh one, um, three exempt organization. So again, a lot of times counselors, um, you have multiple hats, so either you um, volunteer obviously on council. But you probably also volunteer for a number of other organizations. If your conflict is because you sit on another uh, nonprofit board or whatnot, um, you do not. It's not a conflict of interest, and the reason for that is generally there's no financial interest there. Now that, there is an exception though to that, um, if you're the executive director or a staff member for one of those nonprofit boards and you do get paid by them. Then that's different, um, there could be a conflict of interest there. Um, and so we just discussed when a conflict of interest occurs, um, and when that occurs, you have to disclose the conflict. And you have to recuse yourself from the matter. But what happens in the situation where enough members of the council experience the same conflict of interest? And there's enough of them to where a quorum no longer exists, so what do you do? So, under the rule of necessity, if a public official is met with an actual conflict of interest. And the public official's vote is necessary to meet the minimum quorum requirements for the official action. Then the public official may, they have to publicly disclose the conflict. And they may not participate in any discussion on the matter, but they can vote. Okay, so if you and a quorum of you all have the same conflict of interest. What do you do, right, you either had to vote yes or no to dispose of the matter. What you'd wanna do then is, um, you can't discuss it, um, but you can, you can hold a vote enough to where. You can say yes or no on the matter. Um, and it doesn't apply in situations where there's no quorum because someone didn't show up to meeting or there's an absence. It's truly only where the quorum is not there because there are so many people who have the conflict of interest. So if you find yourself in this situation where this might occur, and it's pretty rare, but it does happen. Um, reach out to the city attorney and the ethics commission, because it's so rare, you wanna definitely verify and make sure this is one of those situations. Um, so hypotheticals, cause I, I like hypotheticals, they help you flush out these, these concerns. So in her private capacity, a city counselor is employed as the executive director of a five oh one three C nonprofit economic development organization. That advocates for healthy economic development of the southern Oregon region. And it provides its members with a common voice on shared issues. The city council is considering whether to allocate and disperse funds to the organization. Such as approving the city's membership fees to the organization or authorizing city funds for staff and counselors to attend the organization's events and conferences. So may the counselor take any action decision or vote on whether to allocate or disperse funds to this organization. So you're looking at a nonprofit organization. Um, but in this case, the executive director cannot, so as the executive director. Um, the organization is considered a business in which the counselor is associated. Therefore, she would need to disclose the conflict, and then she would need to recuse herself from any decision on the matter. So it doesn't matter that the organization is a nonprofit. Um, so if the facts change, so instead, if the counselor wasn't the executive director but just sat on the board of directors. Uh, there would be no conflict because sitting on the board of directors of a nonprofit is one of those listed exceptions. And again, there's unlikely that there's any sort of financial tie there specifically to the counselor. Yes, counselor?
Yeah, I just wanted to dig in this, this one a little bit more, um, so. Uh, the key, one of the key things here is that the council's deciding whether or not to um, financially benefit. The nonprofit organization, right? So if it was just a matter of the nonprofit organization saying, we're really advocating that you do this thing. And they don't have any financial interest in it one way or the other, it doesn't matter if the counselor is like an executive director uh, for that nonprofit. Is that right?
Correct, cause, cause the decision of the council wouldn't have a financial impact on the organization. So if, now, I will say, if they're advocating for a decision, so let's not talk about, you know, actual direct funding. But let's say they're, they're advocating for um, legislation that may impact funding for the organization. In that case, it would be a potential conflict because the council isn't making the actual decision that will provide the funding. But that decision could in the future provide funding because they made that initial decision. So in that case though, the executive director council slash counselor would have to just announce their potential conflict. Um, because, yeah, there may be funds involved in the future. Um, Jordan, I think your hand was up first.
Yeah, this is actually a great one to dive into, cause I know a lot of our counselors are um, active in nonprofits in the area. So if, if the city goes through a competitive procurement process. And, you know, a specific nonprofit is selected that a counselor does have a tie to, either as staffers ED. Can they vote on awarding the contract since it was a. Competitive process to select that nonprofit?
Um, so is it what, so I would say I would, at a minimum, you'd have to announce the conflict. But again, it depends on the whole selection process, so if it's one of those where essentially. Um, staff has vetted all the, you know, all the entities, um. Uh, you, yeah, I think there would be a conflict there actually in most situations.
Yeah, interesting, okay, thank you.
Cause no matter how minimal that financial impact be, right, it might not have like a direct impact on their actual salary. Because the money, the way it funnels, but if it benefits the business in which they're considered affiliated with. That, the big picture would have impact on their future employment, right, so I would consider that as a conflict, yeah.
A counselor, I guess.
So, sort of, I, I think this is along the lines of, of um, what Counselor Promonov asked. But if the nonprofit has, so it sounds like this is really financially based. So, if the nonprofit has um, put together a proposal for something. And um, and the council's voting on it, that, but they're not, they won't gain financially from it, right? They're just saying, you should do this thing, and then contract, you know, some solar company to do it for you. That wouldn't be a conflict of interest, correct?
Correct, it doesn't sound like it, no, because there's no, there's no financial impact on the nonprofit in that case. Yeah, it's tricky, um, like I said, these might come up more, these have probably come up in the past, and you probably maybe have made decisions in the past that. Maybe you wouldn't make today after this presentation, it's okay, we're gonna move forward and do better in the future.
I think actually, sometimes it's the opposite, I think people are reluctant to, to be on council because they think. Oh, you know, my, my passion is this, and now I won't be able to ever vote on this issue ever again. Um, so I think that the key thing for a lot of new counselors to explain to them, if there's no financial advantage to the, you know, the um, the nonprofit. Thing you're not in conflict.
Yeah, I mean, you're absolutely able to make decisions based on your private personal interests, as long as they're not financially related, related, right? I mean, that's why a lot of people run for councils, because they have a passion about something, and they wanna be able to make a difference. Um, but on that same note, I will say, um, sometimes depending on the issue, even if it's allowed by the ethics laws. If it's a hot topic, the public's perception might be really strong on something. And you might still um, consider not, consider refusing yourself just because of the public's perception of your decision, even though it's legal by ethics laws. Now, but that's gonna depend on some of your local rules about whether or not you can abstain from a vote. I know some cities have specific rules about when counselors can and cannot abstain. Um, but you may wanna consider that, even if legally under the ethics laws, you, you can still vote and discuss a matter. You might just still choose to abstain because of the public perception, so it's all kind of tied together, everything. Yeah, you guys have a tough job, I wouldn't wanna do it. So, um, this example, a budget committee member has a spouse who is a city employee, okay, this happens all the time, small cities. The budget committee member makes budget recommendations to the city council, which is the body that ultimately approves the final budget. Does the committee member have a conflict of interest? Um, so the committee, committee member only has what's considered a potential conflict of interest. And therefore, they're required to disclose the potential conflict of interest, but they can still participate and they can still vote on the budget. The committee member um, doesn't have an actual conflict of interest because the committee is not the ultimate decision maker. The ultimate decision maker on the budget is the city council. So for those on council, you probably know, you have the budget committee, they really look at all the details and they really kind of provide um the quote, final budget for approval, but they don't approve the final budget. That's the city council's job. So because of that, the committee member um only has a potential conflict of interest cuz whether their actual decision doesn't actually de- determine whether or not um there's a financial impact on their spouse. So if the public official was not a budget committee member, but rather an actual city counselor, um, then they would have an actual co- conflict of interest. And they would have an actual conflict of interest on any decision that would impact their spouse as a staff member. And so the counselor could discuss portions of the budget that have no financial impact on their spouse. So let's let's kind of see if this looks like, this comes up of cities a lot. So let's say you're a city counselor and you have a spouse who works um in public works. Um, so you can just, you would have to then, you could discuss anything else in the budget that's not related to the public works department. Okay, you can talk about um, you know, the budget for any, for, you know, contracts, anything else, as long as it doesn't impact that specific department that your spouse was. So what you'd wanna do in that case, um, you would want, when it's time to approve the budget, you would ask your staff to separate out the budget as a whole and then the budget with everything except that one specific department where that employee is in. And the counselor could then approve everything but that one department. And when it comes to the final vote to approve the budget as a whole, that counselor unfortunately would have to recuse themselves from that decision. So that is something that you might experience or you might have experienced in the past. Um, but like I said, with small cities, a lot of times, um, everybody's related to everybody else, including staff. Um, and on that note, with nepotism, um, here's kind of how the ethics laws work with that. So nothing in the ethics statutes state that you and your relative or household member cannot be employed by the same public employer at the same time or serve on the same governing body at the same time. However, the law does state that public officials cannot participate in any personnel act, personnel action that would impact the employment of a relative or household member. So in addition, a public official may not direct directly supervise their relative or household member unless the public body, such as a city council, adopts policies specifying when a public official acting in an official capacity may directly supervise a relative or household member. Um, so Oregon Administrative Rule one ninety nine zero zero five zero zero eight O discusses those types of policies specifically. Okay, so um, like I said, it's okay if you're on council and you do happen to have um a relative who is on city staff. Uh, there's nothing that directly prohibits that from happening. Um, just be careful when it comes time to discussing, you know, budget. Um, if you, if the council does have supervision over that employee, that's gonna become an issue. Um, I will say, um, there are some times where even though it's not prohibited by law, um, in practice, it just doesn't work. So um, let's say this, there's a city counselor who's related to the city manager, that's an employee that you directly supervise. That kind of makes some things very dif- like the actual business of the city difficult to do because whenever you're discussing the supervision of um, that employee, you're gonna have to recuse yourself and that might be on a lot of matters. So it just depends on the specific case and um the relationship between those two parties, but it's not specifically prohibited. All right, um, so what about private employment by public officials? So again, similar nepotit- nepotism, uh, state ethics laws do not specifically govern a private, a public official's private employment. But there are some guidelines to follow. So first off, your city might have a local policy that does. Um, but so again, always check your local policy. But the Oregon Ethics Commission has issued a number of guidelines that are helpful to those who are privately employed. Uh, public officials are not to engage in private business activities on their city time. Okay, so um, you might have access to your city, a city computer or a laptop or iPad or something. Um, don't use that for your private business, okay? For city employees, when you're at the office and you're on city time, do not be doing private business stuff. Don't be doing your side business while you're at work for the city. Um, a city's supplies, city's facilities, equipment, employees, or records or any public resources are not to be used for your private business interests. So again, city computers, city paper. If you're a higher level staff person, don't be asking people below you to do work for you. That involves your private business. That should be pretty obvious. The position as a public official is not to be used to take official action that could have a financial impact on a private business. Okay, again, that's one of those violations we talked about. Don't make decisions that are gonna have financial impacts to yourself or your family members. Um, again, confidential information gained as a public official, you cannot use those for your private um financial gain. And then remember to watch out for conflicts of interest. So again, most likely that's what you're gonna have to be worried about is your conflicts of interest when it comes to your private employment. But there's not um any sort of overall prohibition on your private employment when you are a public official. Uh, the last area I'm gonna talk about, it looks like we're doing good for time, so I'm gonna get you out of here before six forty five, are your statements of economic, economic interest. So for some of you seasoned um officials and for city seasons uh staff, higher level staff members, this is not gonna be a surprise to you at all. This is really gonna be for newer people. Uh, state law requires that all elected officials and then the city administrator slash manager, um, any sort of municipal judges or planning commission members must file a statement of economic interest every single year. Um, so it's not exclusive to the people I just listed above. Those are just the ones that are most likely impacted. Um, there's an ex- exclusive list under two forty four oh five oh, okay? Most likely you, uh, if you're one of, if you're not a city commissioner, you're not the city manager, you're not an elected official, you most likely already know if you're one of those um additional people, but it doesn't hurt to double check that list. Uh, the SCI is completed online now, um, and it has an April fifteenth deadline. And there's no grace period for holidays or weekends. So if April fifteenth falls on a Sunday, that's still gonna be the deadline, doesn't matter. Um, there's usually the commission's electronic filing system will issue an email mid-March advising filers of the filing window. The notification is sent based on information provided by the city's jurisdictional contact, which is typically your city recorder, but it could be somebody else. Um, and so it's important that you know if that person has an email on file that you're actually going to check. So whether or not that's your official city email, or if you prefer them to provide, maybe you have a personal Gmail account that you check more often. Um, state, it doesn't matter statewide, uh, which email address you provide, just make sure it's when you check cuz that's where you're gonna be getting all your reminders. And then what is the SCI disclose? So you're gonna be asked to disclose a a number of things. So you're gonna talk about your business interests, um, any sources of income related or not related to the city, uh, any ownerships in real property other than your principal residence, any sort of honorarium received in excess of fifteen dollars. So you wanna note though that we talked about honorarium a little while ago. We talked about honorarium up to twenty five dollars. For the SCI, you have to disclose anything over fifteen. So that might be another reason why when it comes to gifts or receiving items, you just wanna have, maybe just say no because of the tracking purposes, it might just not be worth the effort. Okay, something to think about. Um, you have to disclose names of compensated lobbyists associated with your business interest, again, related or not related to the city's business. Okay, so if you have a private business that you have lobbyists, you're gonna wanna potentially have to disclose those. Any names of entities in which you received over fifty dollars to participate in confections, conventions, fact-finding missions, trips, or negotiations. So those are type of trips that were, um, I didn't specifically talk about it, but it's in the list of the gift exceptions. So again, you're allowed to receive these things under the gift provisions of ethics laws, but there are record-keeping requirements for the SCI that you still have to keep. So again, this kind of, this is one of those another examples where, yes, you can receive that um, gift or amount of money or whatnot, but you might not want to because of the tracking requirements involved. Um, there's a complete list underneath ORS two forty four oh six oh and two forty four oh seven oh. Yes, ma'am?
I'm just wondering if that includes like uh travel expenses or is that fifty dollars cash?
Um, it would include expenses, so plane tickets that they might cover for you, anything else. Um, a good note, so I've never had a file at SCI, so I don't necessarily know specifically the process firsthand, but I know people who have. And I know people who are very thorough and usually overthink things, which is, I'm totally one of those people who overthinks things. Um, and they've just went and called and asked, and they said that the staff that answered the phone was more than happy to answer their questions and to walk them through what to disclose and whatnot. And they always said, when in doubt, over-disclose because they'll just tell you, no, I don't need that, or it's better to over-disclose than under-disclose, I should say. And again, um, the staff is super happy to answer your questions, no matter how dumb they may sound. I'm one of those people who doesn't believe in dumb questions. Um, but if even if you feel that way, uh, just call and ask and they're they're more than happy to help you and they said, they wanna educate you. They don't wanna have to go through the process of finding you if they don't have to. So speaking of fines, uh, what are the penalties? So um, the there's, there's a late fee of ten dollars for the first fifteen days after April fifteenth. Uh, after the first fifteen day, fourteen days, excuse me, the fee increases for fifty dollars for each day afterwards. And then there's a maximum penalty for five thousand dollars. Okay, so ten dollars isn't that much, right? Fifty dollars, depending, the doesn't, isn't really that much. But my rule of thumb is why bother, right? You know, you're gonna have to do this every year. Don't miss the filing deadline. Okay, just get it done with and don't be worried about it. I would rather not pay a five thousand dollar fine if I didn't have to. Okay, it's not worth it to me. Um, so finally, resources. So um, you know, you sat through this presentation, all is great, you know, but it's also five forty five in the evening and uh, or six forty five in the evening and you're tired and you think of all these different questions afterwards. So where do you go? So um, I I would always recommend first line of defense is to go to the commission's website, okay? Um, there's plethora of information there. There is that list of various opinions they used to have. They actually have a super, super helpful guide. It's called a Guide for Public Officials. And they just updated it uh last year. So they've had it for a while, but it was kind of out of date and they, like I said, just updated it. So the information should be all, all there that you need to know. It's a super helpful guide written in user-friendly terms. It's not written for lawyers, so anybody, I mean, I hate things written for lawyers cuz we make things overly complicated. Um, super helpful. You can also email or call them with your questions. And also, if you're in a situation where you want an actual written opinion because it's a tricky situation, you're gonna have to rely upon it. Um, you can ask for something in writing. Um, they're more than happy to provide that for you. And in fact, actually, when I've had to ask questions over the phone, they were like, hey, could you just send me an email with that question so I have all that information on hand? Um, so it, you can keep a record of the question and the answer. It's always helpful. Um, you can always reach out to your city attorney, though I know smaller cities don't like to because it costs money, understandable. Um, um, but I will say there's a caveat there cuz your city attorney can't actually necessarily, they can provide you with advice, but you can't rely upon it like you can with the commission's staff advice. So most likely what they're gonna do is just say, I could reach out to the commission for you, you could do it yourself, you know that. It just kind of depends. If it's something that impacts your entire council, it might be worth reaching out to your city attorney to do that. Um, and then finally, feel free to call me here at the league. I might not have an answer for you because I am in no way an expert in everything, but I can at least maybe walk you through some um of the steps and then um, you know, help you sort out some issues. And I can also help you frame the question to ask the commission. Because again, I, you can't rely upon my advice. I can't even legally provide you with legal advice. But um, I can help frame and clarify your answer. So when you do ask the commission, it's pretty on point with what you need to ask to get the right answer. Um, that's all I have for you today. Um, I'm happy to answer any additional questions that you might have. Go ahead, Jordan. I'll stop my my screen share. You can see your face.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Jamie. I do just have a couple of questions for generally. Say, as a council member or myself, that we hear from a community member, a potential ethics violation, are we legally responsible for reporting that to the ethics commission for response for um investigation?
Oh, so unlike your duty to report child abuse or um elder abuse, there is no obligation to report anything. Um, and to be honest, I think the commission would prefer you not report it. So there are a lot of times where the commission will get multiple reports over alleged ethics violations, or maybe your council's not getting along too well. Um, yeah, you're not required to, no.
And then my last question was, you know, say I commit an ethics violation, it gets reported, investigated, and found to be a violation. What are the consequences that I would face?
So um, generally, if it's your first time, um, you most likely would just get like a leper, a letter reprimand saying, you did this, we're gonna fine against you, but we're not gonna give you a civil penalty. Um, the worst case is, is that there's gonna be a civil penalty. Most likely, it's not gonna be more than five thousand dollars at most. I find it very rare that they issue a civil penalty. So unless you're a repeat offender, so you did something, maybe the first time you got just a letter reprimand, you did it again, knowing the exact situation. Okay, that's gonna be different, right? They're gonna think you're not listening to us, like we're trying to educate you, but you're not, you don't get it. Um, I know a couple of years ago, for those who've been in Oregon for a while, you had, there was a big ethics issue with the governor and his spouse. Um, and I don't even think for that, I don't think there was more than like a two thousand dollar fine. So they're they're really not there to fine. That's not where they get their revenue from. Um, it's really to educate. So you're uh, it it depends, but if it's your first time and it's a, you know, reasonable uh mistake, you're probably in the clear.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, are there any other questions? Um, any questions from uh folks in the audience? Any uh public officials who are surprised to learn you're a public official and you have questions can raise your hand? Mayor?
Hi, everybody. Uh, I just wanted to make a comment. Um, it, while um the penalties are not very stiff, if we all remember that, um, the same official that you're talking about, who basically his career was over after that. I mean, there are, there are public consequences, but I think everybody should be mindful of it. Um, anyway, I just thought I'd point that out.
Thank you, mayor. Um, any other questions?
Um, well, I will say, if you don't mind, Counselor, backing the mayor on staff. For staff, our handbook says that if you do commit an ethics violation, it does put your employment in jeopardy. No, mayor is right. There are actual co- um, other consequences besides just the commission's um recommend.
Well, thank you so much, Jamie and and Jordan for putting this together. Um, I've, I've probably sat through this a couple of times and I always learned something. Um, especially that stiff fine about not getting that uh SCI in 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 time. I didn't realize that. But um, they do send reminders and I've done it online and it's pretty, it's pretty straightforward and easy. Um, so with that, I'm about to uh adjourn the study session, but I just wanted to check with you. Jordan will be back here at six forty five. Um, so it's six thirty five now. I'll adjourn the study session.
Thank you.
Thanks so much. And I guess it'd probably be easiest if we just stayed on and and just turned off our videos until six forty five. Great, thanks.
That'd be great. Thank you all. Jamie, thank you so much for coming tonight. Really appreciate your time. You're welcome. And I'll get that email over to you with the presentation before I leave, so you'll get it in a couple of minutes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep.